Go ahead, little crack it up. Down, 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 down. Don't look over. Don't look up at your feet. You can suck around here, don't look at your life. That's not good, yeah. It's black. Yeah, okay. You're right.
Good evening.
Good evening. Quiet today.
Notice was given, legal notice was given, that a regular meeting of the mayor and board of alderpersons for Thursday, May 10th, at 6:00 PM in the courtroom at City Hall was given. We have the agenda called to order. We're gonna observe a moment of silence. We're gonna ask Councilman Robert Shaw to lead us in with the invocation, and we're gonna ask Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Marvin Moore to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Let us stand. End this session.
Lord, we just thank you for this opportunity tonight to come together as we work on the many things that help improve our city and our parish. And, Lord, we just thank you for the blessings that you poured out on us, Lord, and you've given us and taken care of us. And we pray that you'd be with us in this time of our meeting tonight, and may we accomplish mighty things. In Christ's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Salute, pledge.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the pistol, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Goldman.
Mr. Moore.
Here.
Mr. Prater.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Green.
Present.
Mr. Locke.
Here.
All present.
This meeting is now in session. Announcements? Do we have any announcements?
May I also make one?
Yes, sir.
Harris, we didn't have adequate time to review your civic source information. And what I am asking for with the council and the mayor is that we defer this until our next meeting, which will be in June. Anybody?
I second. I make the motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second that motion.
Oh, okay, thank you, Mayor. No, you may as well ask for it.
What did you say?
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded on Mr. Shaw's recommendation that we entertain and place on the agenda the civic source matter.
Yes, sir.
For the next council meeting. If we have to call a special council meeting, can we, that'll occur quicker than the two-month? You know, I anticipate we may have to call something.
We will have a special call meeting in June to pass our budget.
Yes, ma'am, but that's late June, isn't it?
It will be late June.
It's after the regular.
Yes.
But, Mr. Harris, if we have one between now and the regular, because I know you've been waiting and you wanna get a resolution to the question. Now, a- as you know, this council voted to terminate, correct?
Right.
Yeah, so, so it would be improper for us to really do this and go through this unless we expanded the agenda. And Mr. Shaw is pretty clear, I think, that we're gonna entertain this on the next time. We do have, the council did vote to terminate the agreement. Is that correct, council?
That's correct.
And council had prepared a letter that I've been holding. Counsel, did you wanna give a copy to Mr. Harris? Or you wanna say anything?
I think that it should follow the proper channel, Mayor, part to the service agreement adopted in 2013 between the City of Bastrop and Acton, AKA Civic Source. It requires communication to go by certified mail to the ten individuals that's on the contract.
To Mr. Adams and Mr. Barris.
Specifically, Brian Barrios and Ryan Adams, S1. I just think that we should just follow the protocol on that.
Okay, yeah. And, you know, we wanna respect the councils. You've been a mayor of a larger town than Bastrop, and you understand that we have to follow what the council directs. But we can get together, and you have every councilman's number, and I promise you, we're gonna try to make, we're gonna try to come up with the best thing.
May I say, Mr. Mayor and Council, I'm here at your wishes, you know? So I fully accept what you're saying. We have not received a letter of termination. That, and your status as a client is very important to Civic Source, and that's why I came last month, and that's why I'm here again this month, and I'll be happy to come again to go over it. And, Mr. Shaw, I respect the fact that I have listed the positives on every aspect, and also the negatives. And so I would like for you to consider it. And if Ms. Go-
Yes, yes, thank you, council.
And I'm closing.
I think that it's kinda out of order.
Yes, it is, because it's not on the agenda.
Isn't this under public comments?
Well, no, we're doing announcements right now, but it's not, it's public comments as it relates to items on the agenda, and this is not on the agenda. So we understand, and we've heard, we know the benefits and the detriments. So we promise that we'll get with you and, without delay.
Thank you very much.
So all I was saying is that we're not gonna try to string you out and make you wait. If we have another meeting, I anticipate there may be one little thing that we may have to address before our next council meeting. But it's one little item, and if we do, we'll add you on that one, which could be next week.
If you, if either your office or Ms. Goldman contacted, that'd be fine.
We will, and you're welcome to talk to any of these gentlemen. You have all the numbers, and me. And I got your letters. We'll, we'll talk.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Very much.
And, and we hate you had to drive so far.
Well, it's, it's still in Louisiana, and you're important.
Sir, okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, we appreciate you. Okay, public comments as they relate to items on the agenda? Oh, wait, I'm sorry, we have a couple of more announcements. Go ahead, Mr. Shaw.
Oh, I got one. I need to say, it's really more of a public comment than, but I just wanted to thank the constituents and also the, all the voters who went out and approved our three renewals of sales tax. And without you, we would've been in dire straits. So thank y'all very, very much.
Well, I can scratch that one off my list. Thank you, Robert, because we sure appreciate them. All three measures passed eighty percent for and twenty percent. So we wanna thank all the voters who voted, period. And because the democracy takes, you know, both sides. So, I know that's not me. My goodness, I thought I cut it off. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I know you was taught to cut that off before you come out.
Yes, I was, Mr. Prater, and I sure thought I had done it.
Sir?
That's right, that's right. You wanna take this?
I make a motion, we see you.
I'll second it for you, Mr. Prater.
That's embarrassing. Okay, all right. Another announcement, Mr., in this section, Mr. Moore. You have something.
Yes.
Okay.
If we might. Don't you wanna present this one?
Well, yes.
Okay. We're gonna step down and step over here. We have a presentation.
Should all of us step down? We all make, we all making, we all agree on the proclamation, right?
We'd like for the class of 2008 to come up.
Do we have a representative for the class of 2008? These are awfully young people, Mr. Moore.
She's out in 2018.
Mr. Prater's wondering if you all are members of the class of 2018. Come on over. Okay, yes, your name?
Daria Walker.
Ms. Walker, where do you live?
In Bastrop.
In Bastrop.
Jasmine Moore Smith, and I live in Red Oak, Texas.
Can you believe it's been ten years?
No.
Did they?
Bye-bye, I feel old.
Okay, all right. We have a proclamation, these fine gentlemen.
Thank you.
These fine gentlemen, you can see everyone's signature on here. And we have a proclamation. It says, "A proclamation by the authority vested in the mayor and board of aldermen of the City of Bastrop. We do hereby issue this proclamation honoring the Bastrop High School class of 2008 alumni. Whereas, the mayor and board of aldermen of the City of Bastrop desires to establish continuous community service engagements within the City of Bastrop by developing working partnerships for now and into the future. Whereas, the mayor and the board of aldermen of the City of Bastrop acknowledges the contributions as part of the Bastrop High School Community Service Project that the Bastrop High School class of 2008 alumni made on May the 5th. Whereas, the mayor and board of aldermen for the City of Bastrop recognizes the commitment and action shown by the class of Bastrop High School alumni, class of 2008. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the board of aldermen for the City of Bastrop hereby declares today, May 10th, 2018, as BHS Class of 2008 Alumni Day within the City of Bastrop in recognition of their commitment to becoming a continuing partner providing vital community services engagement, service engagement for our city." Now, this is gonna continue, right?
Yes, sir, we got it. We have another engagement coming up in September.
So we're looking for continuing partners.
Definitely.
Because you guys and your commitment to make Bastrop a place where you love, your hometown, a better place to live, you set a great example. So I wanna present this to the class, and it's signed by Hinner Cotton Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem Marvin Moore, District A, Councilman Larry D.
Prater.
Okay, he's District B, Councilman Robert Shaw, District C, Councilman Dari Dee Dee Green, District D, and Councilman Howard Locke, District E.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And we have one more thing. I'd like to congratulate them for coming back and giving back, because a lot of kids don't do that. Matter of fact, like the mayor said, on May 5th, they came down and did some work at Bastrop High. And so what the plaque says, "Planted by a class of 2008, May 5th, 2008. We are the minds that they warn you about." So on behalf of the City of Bastrop, we give you this to place in front of Bastrop High.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's a long announcement.
Any other announcements? Comments as they relate to the items on the agenda. Do we have any public comment? Item five, approval of previous minutes, regular meeting held on April 12, 2012.
May I move that we accept those minutes as read?
It's been moved by councilman, it's been moved by Councilman Locke and seconded by Councilman Shaw that we approve the minutes. Are there any questions, discussion? All in favor? All opposed? All in favor? All opposed? Okay, the, the minutes are approved. Item six, Finance Committee Report, Resolution 18-1767, Bills and Claims for the Month of April 2008. Finance Committee Chair, Robert Shaw.
Mayor, we have revealed, reviewed the bills and claims for the month of April of 2018 and recommend that we approve these bills and claims.
Councilman Shaw has recommended approval. Do we have a motion?
I second that motion, Mayor.
Oh, do we have a motion? You make the motion. Councilman Shaw makes the motion. It's seconded by Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Moore. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Resolution 18-1769 is approved. Appointment of a member, I'm sorry, 67. 18-1767, thank you, I was on seven, is, is approved. Resolution 18-1769, a resolution providing for canvassing the returns and declaring the results of the special election held by the City of Bastrop, Parish of Mohaw, State of Louisiana, on Saturday, April the 18th, 2018. Ms. Goldman.
Mayor, this is a state up that once we have our election, they have to canvass it. Bill Bose, our bond attorney, will send this to the state. But in that, y'all have a copy of them. All three were renewed, all three are for ten years, and all three passed by eighty percent. Y'all have a copy in that of the proposal as it was voted on, and also you have every poll in each district and what the results was there. So we would ask y'all to consider to approve this, and we'll make sure the state gets a copy.
Ms. Goldman, there's one thing on here that may need to be corrected.
Okay.
On page five, there's precinct 0101, Mangum Community Center, 602 Broadway.
Yeah.
And 0002 Mangum Community Center, 602 Broadway. Those were inadvertently included in this. So with the correction of the precincts, of the precincts that-
Well, actually, the third one may be too.
Also Archibald.
Yeah.
Oh, Archibald, I'm sorry, the three, the first three.
I'll have Mr. Bose double-check that.
Yes, ma'am. So we're approving this with the corrections. Am I, am I correct, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, we will do that.
So, gentlemen, this is necessary in order to, in order to meet the state's requirements. Is that correct?
I make the motion, Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved by Mayor Pro Tem, Councilman Moore, seconded by Councilman Locke that we adopt this resolution. Eight with the corrections. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? The resolution is adopted. Eight, item eight, appoint member to the Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Maurice Norman, can you come up, please, sir? Our Planning and Zoning Commission has had a vacancy for a little while, is that correct, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and Mr. Maurice Norman, a gentleman who is very thorough in his, in his approach to life. How you doing, Mr. Norman?
Fine, sir, gentlemen.
Great, great. Mr. Norman, are you willing to accept this appointment, sir?
Yes, sir, I am.
You have any comments that you'd like to make before this council?
Other than upon accepting this position, I'm gonna be as I've always been, thorough in that regard, regardless to how many feathers it may ruffle.
Uh-oh.
We call you at three o'clock in the morning. We answer the phone like the mayor.
Either phone.
There've been times he'd have answered at three o'clock in the morning.
Okay. Mr. Norman, we, we do appreciate you. Of course, in Bastrop, we love commerce. We're a pro-business town.
Yes, sir.
And of course, you being a businessman, I'm sure you understand that, that we want progress.
Yes, sir.
And so, is it, is there anything that anyone would like to ask Mr. Norman before we make this appointment? Is any comment that anyone wants to? Okay. Mr. Norman, I, as mayor of the City of Bastrop, would like to appoint you to the Planning, Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission. Will you accept that appointment?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Need a motion?
I make the motion, Mayor.
I second.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Moore, and it's been seconded by Councilman Shaw to, to appoint Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? You, you are appointed, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item nine, appoint a member to the Bastrop Historic District Commission. Is Ms. Gwendolyn C. here? Okay, Ms. Gwendolyn C. has expressed the fact that she will serve. And is that correct, Ms. Linn?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Gwendolyn C. is a highly qualified person, and she's served as principal, most, most notably, I guess, principal of the Mohaw Magnet School, which was one of Louisiana's, it was Louisiana's fourteenth-ranked school, and it was a blue ribbon school. And we are so glad to have someone that's dedicated to, to Mohaw Parish in Bastrop to take this appointment. Can we get a motion to, to approve this appointment to the Bastrop Historic District Commission?
I make that motion there.
I second.
Moved by Councilman Locke, seconded by Councilman Prater that we approve this appointment. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Ms. C. is appointed. March 2018 Revenue Expense Report.
Mayor, and on the original agenda, we do have March and April.
Okay, March and April, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's just a report.
Okay, and everyone has signed that we received?
Well, they don't have to sign.
Okay, all right. Okay, so, Delinquent Occupation License Report, we have that. Item 11. No actions required?
No.
Okay, item 12.
Not at this time, next, next month, we will have action.
Next month, yes.
When will we, we will be sending out the notices? Is this right now?
Are you talking on the occupational?
Yeah, occupation, deli-
We've been sending, and I've been calling.
Yes, we have. We have processes and procedures in the City of Bastrop, and we're gonna uphold these processes and procedures. And one of the processes is that a person or an entity doing business in the City of Bastrop must have an occupation license. We have some delinquents that, that have not paid even for the last couple of years. Is that correct, Ms. Goldman?
We do, that's true.
Yes, and we have to get that business done, and we'd like for anyone who's watching this broadcast to, to, if you're a businessperson, please know that, that you need to come and, and renew your occupation license. We're open at City Hall Monday through Friday from eight till, eight until five, and we will be contacting you and canvassing the city for people operating businesses without the proper credential. Item 12, Resolution 18-1762, authorizing City of Bastrop, Louisiana to adopt the ad valorem millage rate for year, tax year 2018. Ms. Goldman.
Mayor, this is an annual thing that the State of Louisiana requires us to do. And what we're asking y'all to consider is just to send, vote yes in support of the resolution. It lists the each millages, and those millages are the millages that the people voted several, several years, I know over fifty. And so we're asking you to, to approve this so we can give it to the tax collector. She will in turn send it down to the legislature auditor where they will start the process of our tax row for this year.
You've heard Ms. Goldman's, yeah, presentation or request.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the ad valorem taxes as Ms. Goldman has laid out for us here. And it's been on notice for at least a month.
It's been moved by Councilman Shaw, seconded by Councilman Locke that we adopt this resolution, approve the passage of 18-1762, authorizing the city to adopt the ad valorem millage rate for the tax year 2018. Any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? The ayes have it. Resolution, item 13, Resolution 18-1768, a resolution assuming responsibility and liability for inspection conducted by the Bastrop Fire Prevention Bureau. Chief Crowder.
Good evening, Mayor, and City Council.
Good evening.
Everyone. What this is basically asking is, my guys at the Fire Prevention have been working hard to attain accreditation for our Fire Prevention Bureau, and basically they're working with the state Fire Marshal's office to be able to, to get the ability to do some of their inspections. And they will, you know, with the, with the accreditation, they will, they will be able to do them for the, you know, if a state fire marshal can't make it, we can take over in that area and do some of the inspections. So that's, you know, that's what we're trying to attain and also helping us with our rating.
Okay. This, we wanna thank the Bastrop Fire Department for the progress that, that you've made, chief, and your, your department as a whole. We're excited about what you all are doing.
Most definitely, we are too.
And this is just one of the, one of the things that, that we love seeing. So this is a resolution, assume responsibilities and liabilities for inspections conducted by the Fire Prevention Bureau. Can you explain that a little bit, what that means to the council?
Well, basically, basically, it's as simple as, maybe a state fire marshal has an inspection of a, of a daycare or a school or something that we can handle because we're right here. And that we can sign off on, on things that they need done, and they will carry the same way as, as if they did it. So we have that ability in our office now.
Okay, gentlemen?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution 18-1768.
It's been moved by Councilman Locke that we
I second that motion, Mayor.
Eighteen dash seventeen sixty-eight, a resolution, and it's been seconded by Mayor Protem, Councilman Moore. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you, God.
Thank you, Chief. Item fourteen, Ordinance eighteen dash forty-two forty-eight, and ordinance to amend Section nine dash one and Section nine dash two of the Code of Ordinance for the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, relating to inspection, related to inspections and enforcement of the City of Bastrop, State of Louisiana, as approved in said code. Mr. Crowder and Mr. Williams is not here tonight. Chief Crowder.
Basically, the Fire Prevention Bureau partners with code enforcement, and basically, our part is that we do the policing and the for inspections as well, we building, we notify people if they need a permit, ordinances, and we check whenever the inspector is out, we do some of the inspection as far as, with our office as well. We work with J. as far as that, the code enforcement, basically, like you say, as backup to enforce the codes.
Now, is this, is this the one, Chief, that we adopt, that we want to adopt to specify the latest code, is that the same thing?
Yes, yes, to adopt the latest codes.
Yes.
That is, I guess, two thousand eighteen code.
Yes.
It hadn't been adopted by the state, but that's why we changed the writing to adopt the latest code.
So that we won't have to come back every year when
Every year and change it.
And, and is that how you understand it, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, that's it, that's right.
Okay, so, rather than us coming back and forth
Every time.
Every time the new release of the code comes out. Any questions, gentlemen? Okay. What is your pleasure?
I make that motion, Mayor.
I second it.
Been moved by Mayor Protem, Councilman Moore, seconded by Councilman Locke, that we adopt the ordinance. That's eighteen dash forty-two forty-eight to amend Section nine one and Section nine two of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Bastrop, relative to inspections and enforcement of the City of Bastrop as approved, I mean, as provided in these two. Discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you, Chief Crowder.
Thank you.
It passes, it's adopted. Ordinance eighteen dash forty-two forty-nine, I'm gonna ask Councilman Locke to assist on this one, and Mr. Pierre, Mr. Pierre, this is, even though it doesn't say it in the ordinance. Okay, right, Mr. Locke?
Right. It's implied, but it didn't say it.
Yes. This, as you know, the municipal center, when people rent the municipal center, they may choose to have some wine or to serve a beverage of alcohol content, is that correct, Mr. Pierre?
Correct.
And we are have a building that we are using as we would use the municipal center, and all of the regulations and policies and procedures that apply to the municipal center, we'd like to apply to the use of this building. So, this is just conforming the new Bastrop Technology and Conference Center, formerly the Louisiana Mill Training Building, to the same, under the same operational standards and privileges.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilman.
Could you read the Section ten dash two two six and four dash thirty, I think that'll clarify.
Ten, okay. Mr. Locke, you wanna read that?
That bottom part.
Okay. Ten dash what?
Two two six and four dash three zero.
Do you have your copy, I don't have it in front of me, let's see if I Oh, yeah, we got counsel, counsel. Counselor wrote this stuff, I guess he can read it.
Paying him all them big bucks, let him earn his money.
Yes, sir, Mr. Prater, let me earn my keep today. Section ten dash two two six, four dash thirty, possession of, possession or consumption of alcoholic beverages on public property owned or operated by the city, it shall be unlawful for any person to possess or consume alcoholic beverages of either high or low content on the premises of any park, playground, recreational facility, or public building owned or operated by the city, except for the authorized functions at the municipal center and Technology and Conference Center. The only thing that changes in this ordinance, gentlemen, is the last four words, Technology and Conference Center. So, we just added the Technology and Conference Center under the same privileges of the municipal complex.
If everything else stays the same.
Everything else stays the same, you still can't get that beer in the park, Didi.
Councilman, Councilman Prater, Councilman Prater wants to know if those four words no, never mind. Never mind, thank you, Mr. Locke.
Well, let me say this, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
I have, I've got a hangup with the way it's written here.
You mean on the, on the agenda?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Because, you know, we need to make sure that we're not violating any of these rules that we got in place.
Yes, sir.
And so, I've just
So, on, more specifically, the ordinance, item fifteen, Ordinance eighteen dash forty-two forty-nine, I think you're saying that it seemed a little vague and wasn't in detail on the, on the agenda. Yes, sir, I can understand the concern. And ordinance to amend Section ten dash two two six and Section four dash thirty of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Bastrop, Louisiana, to supplement the code, and thus those four words, to supplement the code to provide for possession and consumption of alcoholic beverages on public property owned and operated, yeah, the well, yeah, because it talks about buildings that's owned by us and, and and operated by us, and we own the Driver's Lawson Building, we own the Dotson Park Building, we own the this building, we own other buildings. But the, the, the language of the ordinance itself specifies the one building that's gonna be used just like the municipal center. In fact, if we lease the municipal center, which will hold seven hundred and some people, in certain configurations, probably eleven hundred in seat. Yeah, about twelve hundred. Some people don't have a crowd that big, and we'd save money by not heating and air conditioning that big a place for two hundred and fifty people. So, we are leasing the, the Technology and Conference Center. It's a wonderful facility, probably the best built building in Bastrop, Robert, you all had a lot of money over at IP to construct that building, that good.
We didn't have enough to keep us running.
Well, it's a wonderful
Saying that my thoughts are, if we follow the rules as written, and are got to be enforced, what I'm saying by that is, we got to make sure that everybody understands that.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
And I got, you know, I just got reservations about it, but I might mostly, man.
Yes, sir, on this, yeah, based on the, because it didn't specify the building here in the Well, it's specified in the ordinance itself, yeah, it is in the ordinance. Those four words just added in.
When you put this in front of the constituents, they say, oh, what are y'all doing here?
Yeah.
You know, you have to be accountable.
Yes, sir.
I'm saying.
Yes, sir. I think that the public needs to know that when they see Section ten dash two two six, that you can come to City Hall and contact us if you want to inspect the document, is that right, counsel?
That's correct, Mayor.
Because the counsel has the documents here ahead of time, the resolution, so, anytime the public has anything that seems a little vague, then, then call us and ask us, we, you know, two eight three, you want me to give you a number, our number?
No, you can give ours.
Two eight three zero two five oh.
And Mayor, I wanna remind y'all, this ordinance, along with the one right before, it was introduced last month. Just as we have, we introduce one month, then we vote the other.
Yes, yes.
And I do apologize for that, but normally, if you think back on your resolutions and your ordinance, what's on the agenda is the subheading, and that's just what we put on there because some of them is really long, and our agendas are really long, so if I put
Amen, amen, sir.
If I put everything, you know, we have a book.
Thank you, don't get him started. I think he has adequately explained it tonight.
Okay, thank you, sir. Ordinance eighteen dash forty-two forty-nine, what's your pleasure?
I make that motion, Mayor.
Second.
Motion's made by Councilman Derry Green, seconded by Councilman Howard Locke, that we adopt this ordinance. Any discussion? All in favor?
Opposed?
Okay, okay, can you give us a roll call, Ms. Goldman?
I can. Mr. Moore? Mr. Prater?
Aye.
Mr. Shaw?
Aye.
Mr. Green? Mr. Locke?
Aye.
Okay, Mayor, it'll be four to one.
Four to one, and I understand your reservation, Robert, yes, and we respect that. Okay. Okay, thank you, sir, the motion carries. So, ordinance eighteen dash forty-two forty-nine is amended, is adopted. Discussion, action, engineering services for the Morehouse Memorial Airport. Ms. Goldman, I believe there's no action, but do you wanna tell us what that is?
There is no action, and the reason why, this particular action was requested from the FAA, we were trying to get in line for a grant that was ninety percent FBI, FBI, FAA and ten percent of Louisiana Department of Transportation. We called them, we had just received one engineer firm that was interested in doing this one particular project, and Brian, our airport manager, called to let them know that we had got one. In April, our general master of the airport, it will be time for us to do the selection of engineers for the airport in April, so she just told us, don't take action on this, and then before April, we'll come back and do it for every, and include that project, and by that time, we should hear whether we're gonna get that money and when.
By what month?
By April.
April of?
April, our contract ends in April of twenty
Nineteen.
Twenty nineteen, you're right, twenty nineteen.
Twenty nineteen.
So, before that, we'll go ahead and do it for the whole airport projects, we'll have more projects included in that, so she told us just to wait, so that's what we'll do.
Okay. So, no action? Any questions, gentlemen? Okay, so, no action tonight. Item seventeen, Resolution eighteen dash seventeen seventy, a resolution authorizing Henry Cotton, Mayor, to employ the services of Neblet, Beard, and Arseno. No, did I, did I pronounce the, is it Bard? It's, I've always heard it Neblet, Beard, and Arseno. They did more advertising on KNOE when it was Channel Eight, when you were a boy, you knew that firm, if you didn't know any other firm. What'd you say, Ms. Goldman?
Yes, you're right.
Yes, it's spelled B-A-R-D, but I know it's always been pronounced, I think Harry Arthur used to
What, actually, Mayor, on your cheat sheet, that's misspelled.
Oh, it's misspelled? On here? Yes, but it's Beard and Arseno, thank you. For legal services relating to opiate litigation, opioid, I'm sorry, litigation, and further providing with release thereof. Would you gentleman, Mr. Pierre, I'm gonna ask you to prepare yourself for discussing this, of course, we know that, I'll give you an example, the Vietnam War, in all of its years, the total was fifty-eight thousand American troops, fifty-eight thousand men and women died, Americans died in that war, and it lasted a lot of years. This opioid situation is probably taking almost fifty thousand lives a year.
Correct.
Is that correct? I'm gonna ask you gentlemen to step up closer to the microphone, and welcome to Bastrop. You notice we punish people from Monroe, we put them last on the agenda, right? Especially lawyers.
Yeah.
Blame, blame Mr. Pierre for that, he planned it.
And I had a colleague say, that looks like Mr. Manning. I seen a ghost, that is him.
Okay, gentlemen, can you talk to us about this?
Sir. Let me, let me start first.
Okay, Mr. Pierre.
And then I'll ask the gentlemen to introduce themselves. I was contacted, you know, a while back to become a part of the Bastrop team, and I thank you all for allowing me to be a part of the Bastrop team. And as that, I think that it's incumbent upon me as your legal counsel to sometime find ways, you know, and receive ways in which we could increase our coffers. As the mayor indicated earlier on, Vietnam was a terrible time for our country by the loss of lives, and this opioid addiction and crisis is not anything close to that, it far surpasses that. I've had my personal experience with it in practicing law in this area specifically, in West Carroll, Morehouse Parish, as well as Richland and Franklin Parishes, and I happened to see it with the most of clients who were subject to the opioid addiction. That being said, this country, and I guess throughout President, has found a war, created a war on these particular addictions, and trying to put a situation in place whereby municipalities and governments are afforded opportunities to receive some of these monies from these large pharmaceutical companies for the addictions and problems they've caused and they place on our community. As such, I was contacted by these gentlemen who are here today, and Mr. Manning, of course, is from Monroe, y'all recognize him from the billboards, and Mr. Carter's coming from us from Alexandria, even though he went to Mississippi College, we're not gonna hold that against him, Mississippi Law School, College Law School, we're not gonna hold that against him. But notwithstanding that, they come here asking the City of Bastrop to authorize the mayor to hire Neblet, Beard, and Arseno to represent the City of Bastrop as they are representing other municipalities, and trying to go after these large pharmaceutical companies for the purposes of getting monies for Bastrop. I let them get into the details, I have met with these gentlemen, I know them pretty well, I presented you all packages in pre-council meeting, I'm not gonna ask you to go through that fifty-page detail, Mr. Arseno, but if you so desire to do so, please do so, but he is the leading authority in class action and multi-story litigation. But I'll say that to say that, please receive them, hear them. I asked him not to be long, 'cause my daughter's graduating tomorrow in Lafayette, and I have to get on the road tonight. So, that being said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Manning and Mr. Carter, let them explain to you all what they're asking, and then I'll give you all my thoughts about whether or not we should endorse their efforts.
Did everyone receive one of those packets that was passed out?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any specific questions before we go into what we need to?
Pretty much, pretty much the cost, what would it cost the city if we adopt this resolution?
It's not gonna cost the city anything, nothing, not one dime. It's all at our risk. Any expert witnesses, any fees or costs will be burdened by the law. If we don't recover any money for the City of Bastrop, you don't owe us anything, you basically got free services.
Okay, the City of Monroe just adopted the resolution as well, right?
That's correct, that was Tuesday night, we went before the City Council in Monroe, and they awarded us the contract as well, the same group of lawyers.
That's all, Chris.
So, Councilman Manning, you'd work real close with
No, I'm not a councilman.
Sorry?
You call me councilman.
Oh, excuse me, councillor, how about that?
Oh, yeah, there you go.
That's what I was supposed to say, councillor. But anyway, you would work with Mr. Pierre, very closely with Mr. Pierre as our city attorney, right?
In terms of this litigation?
Right.
Yes, the contract that Mr. Pierre has reviewed indicates that we have to give him a report every every thirty days. So, we'll report to him, then he'll report back to you guys. Yes, sir.
I asked him not to be long, but let me, let me, let me drop the thing a little bit. In any torturous litigation, uh, there are laws that governs how lawyers get paid. This opioid litigation is not much different, but a few additional perks. And I let Dustin explain those perks, because when we were going through the contract, I was like, "Really?" But notwithstanding that, in these type of litigations, if there's no recovery, there's no obligation to the City of Bastrop. As Mr. Manning said a moment ago, uh, the contract and the services of these lawyers is not gonna cost the City of Bastrop one red cent. My mic is off.
No, no.
It's not gonna cost the City of Bastrop one red cent. But given the fact that they're gonna go out there and put out all the risk, of course, if they recover monies, it's gonna be paid on what is known as a contingency fee basis. Traditionally, I've been doing this for probably, I don't know, probably longer than these lawyers up here, but not much, I don't wanna give my age away, uh, but since nineteen hundred and eighty-seven. And as such, the laws, the, the state puts statutory limits on what lawyers can charge and things of that nature. But it's normally one-third if they don't have to file a lawsuit, forty percent if they have to file a lawsuit, fifty percent if they have to take an appeal. The contract that they're gonna ask us to, uh, ask the mayor to endorse, I asked you all to allow the mayor to endorse, you know, has a lower percentage than that. It starts at twenty percent. And it caps off at thirty-three and a third. So, even under that scenario, you know, that's more monies in the coffers of the City of Bastrop. Now, I had a couple of concerns, and I did express that with these gentlemen earlier today regarding, you know, expenses and things of that nature, and even that, City doesn't have to pay those expenses. So, as I said before, it's not gonna cost any money to the City of Bastrop. Oh, oh, I can let them go on with all these details if you want.
So, we only gain from it, right?
It's only, it's only a gain. It's only a gain, and we have nothing to lose.
And can you briefly...
Yeah.
Tell why, uh, a municipality should benefit from the destructive, uh, nature of these, pharmaceuticals?
Well...
The cost, the, you know, it costs cities. I've seen Chief Campbell back there now.
It can, and I'm glad Chief Campbell is here, because each time that these opioids are abused, it's directly connected to crime, you know, be it property crimes or otherwise. And as a result of that, you know, that requires, you know, the manpower of your police department to be stressed, it also requires the, oh, your local hospitals, you know, to have to be on ready alert. I mean, it's just a cost to the government in general. Oh, and it's a cost to the municipalities, be it the hospitals or the police departments. So, the long and short of it is, there's nothing good come out of the, the misuse of these opioids. You know, the only thing about it is that now that everyone is recognized as an epidemic, then now, what is, it is called a, uh, a theory in law that says, "You're responsible for the actions that you cause." So, when companies go out there and they put these drugs out there, and there's no repercussions if these drugs are abused and things of that nature, then they can go on and make the billions and billions and billions of dollars. You know, at the same time, we're left with the bag. When I say we, I'm talking about the local municipalities, you know, and you who are charged to govern these municipalities have to deal with limited resources to be able to deal with these things. The way the, oh, the, the system is set up, it allows you to go out and create these litigations, and of course, in this, as you can realize, or may recognize, this is not just gonna be the City of Bastrop, it's the whole country against the industry. And as such, these litigation, or they call them multi-district litigation, 'cause they all over, and then you have to get somebody who can house it all in, and then a centralized court is gonna be able to hear it, as opposed to litigations popping up, going everywhere. So, the purpose of having a, a council, or a group of councils who are versed in, who have an expertise in this area, is, is paramount to having the best that you can have. So, the long and short of it, we've been blessed in Louisiana, and I can say this, uh, that we have, uh, in the firm of Neblet, Beard, and Arseno, probably the foremost authorities in the country in mass tort litigation. So, we don't have to go searching for, if I'll, and I know, uh, uh, Mr. Manning has had personal connections with Neblet, Beard, and Arseno, and I've had personal connections, we've done mass tort litigation with that firm before, uh, in the years. Oh, but that being said, I don't wanna sit there and bore you with details, we can always talk about details, but the long and short of it is, it's not gonna cost the City a dime.
One dime.
Let them go get us some money.
From the, uh, let me say something, from the treatment, and I'm a licensed mental health counselor, it's slowly coming in Bastrop.
Right.
We need to do something.
It is, it is.
We got, we got almost ten cases in little Bastrop.
Right, right.
It get out of hand quick, too.
Yes.
It's slowly getting out of hand.
Well, here's the thing...
So, we need to do something.
And, and I'm certain that, uh, all of you all have had an appreciation of what happened in the seventies. In the seventies, it was heroin. Except, I know Mr. Green's too young to reckon real about that.
Nineteen seventies.
Right, right. But that, that was a serious epidemic then, but here's the thing, no one stepped up and addressed the issue. Right now, we're trying to address the issue from a government standpoint and from a legal standpoint. So, I'm saying that to say, I mean, I, I'll turn, I'll let, they can talk to you all day about it, uh, but my suggestion, uh, to you all is that, allow them to go out there and make some money for us, it's not gonna cost us a dime.
I make the most to adopt the resolution.
I second.
It's been moved by Councilman Green, and seconded by Councilman Prater, to adopt resolution eighteen dash seventeen seventy, a resolution authorizing the mayor, Henry Cotton, to employ the services of Neblet, Beard, and Arseno, LLC for legal services relating to opioid litigation, and further providing with respect there, too. It's been moved, seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you so much for coming.
We'll be hearing back to your bills.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. What's item eighteen?
Adjourn.
Adjourn.
We have made history here, we have made history here tonight.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion and we get out of here.
It's motion by, uh, Councilman Prater, seconded by Councilman Derry Green, that we adjourn. Any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, gentlemen. Yes, I know, look, Robert, yeah, yeah, yeah. And you gotta listen to constituents when they, uh... Right, yeah.
I believe we're gonna be fine.
Yep. And it's, it's the same rules as the municipal center. Yes, sir. Thank you so much, Robert. Okay, appreciate it, man. Okay.
Whoops, I got a sign off here.
Yeah.